The zeal and...
Good evening. I would like to call the October 21st, 2025 City Council Meeting to order at 6:31 PM. The public is encouraged to join the meeting online or by phone at the numbers printed on the agenda, which can be found on the city's website at www.diamondbar.ca.gov, or in person, Main Auditorium, South Coast Air Quality Management District. We have also allowed the public comments to be submitted in advance to the city clerk. If any were received, they will be noted for the record when we get to the public comments period. This meeting is being recorded, and by participating, you are giving your permission to be televised. This meeting will be rebroadcast every Saturday and Sunday at 9:00 AM and alternate Tuesday at 8:00 PM. An archive for viewing on the city's website at www.diamondbar.ca.gov. Now, we're going to proceed with the pledge of allegiance, invocation, and roll call. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by council member Andrew Chow.
It's my hand of your heart. Ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, and evergreen.
Please remain standing for the invocation by Associate Pastor at Castle Landmark Church.
Let us pray. Lord, bless this gathering. Watch over all of these leaders. Lord, help us walk in humility and consistency, and thank you for always being there for all of us. Please bless this city of Diamond Bar and all of our residents. Be with those struggling, and may the decisions from this meeting tonight help give hope and encouragement to everyone. We ask for your guidance and your wisdom. Bless those in danger, such as police and fire department, and watch over those serving in the military, especially those from Diamond Bar. Be with our Diamond Bar school system and all the teachers and students. Make Diamond Bar a bright shining example throughout our great state. Give us a healthy balance of unity, zeal, and knowledge tonight. In your name we ask all of this. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. City clerk Santana, can you please call the row?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
I'm here.
Councilmember Liu?
Here.
Councilmember Lo?
Here.
Mayor Protem Tai?
Here.
Mayor Ting?
Here. Thank you. Next session is approval of agenda. City Attorney Sandoval, are there any reportable action from the closed session?
No, Mayor, there's no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Fox, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
The agenda is hereby approved. Next is special presentation certificates, proclamations. First is the 2025 Through My Lens Photo Contest winner. And I would like to invite my city council colleagues down below to present the winners of the 2025 Through My Lens Photo Contest. Tonight, we are recognizing the winners of the 2025 Through My Lens Photo Contest. I want to invite Carlos Carrillo and Li Ma from the Diamond Bar Community Foundation to join us front. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. The foundation is our contest co-sponsor, and it's thanks to them that our winners will be getting a cash prize. Thank you. A bit about the photo contest. It was started by the city in 2008 as a way to boost community spirit, spotlight the photography talents of our community members, and showcase what it is like to live in Diamond Bar. Now, in its 17th year, the contest continues to be a win-win for the resident and the city. Residents get to exercise their passion for photography, and the city gets a collection of incredible photographs to showcase throughout the year. This year, we introduce a new category, Keep It Local, as part of a campaign to encourage residents to shop and dine in the Diamond Bar. And next, Mayor Protem is going to present the winners.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're honoring the photos that received the highest scores. Some are taking first place and others are receiving an honorable mention. Let's start with the winners in our youth category. Our first winner is Ricky Wang. Thank you for being here, Ricky. Her entry, Graduation, took first place. Are we going to get to see those? Her entry, Graduation, took first place in the people category, and she received an honorable mention in the nature category with her photo, Spring. That looks like a mess there, Ricky. Our next first-place winner is Emily Becerra in the pets category. Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Emily, you have to shake everybody's hand. There you go. Good job.
Emily, you get one of those?
That's great. Emily is in the pets category with Summer Pop. That is really cute. In the places category, congratulations go to Michaela Singson. I hope I got that right. With her entry, Monday morning, my weekend needs a weekend. Don't we understand that? I had to look at the names because they're the same. And our next winner, John David Singson, won first place in two categories. In the nature category with his photo, A Dynamic Duo in Bloom, and in our new Keep It Local category with his entry, Keeping It Fresh, Keeping It Local. It's a very, very photogenic family. Good job. And let me pass this on to Councilman Chow.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, and now we're moving on to our youth honorable mentions. And we have first Eric G. in the pets category with his photo, Curiosity. Congratulations. And next, we have Doris Zhang in the nature category with Springs here. Congratulations. Ah, what a nice photo. Okay, and next, we have Fu Man Chen with Where Nature Meets the Light, also in the nature category. Congratulations. Our final youth honorable mention goes to Zoe Toh in the nature category with her entry, Enjoying the Sunset at Larkstone Park. Congratulations. Good job. Thanks, Zoe. Okay, and moving on to the winners in the adult division, we start with Ken Man Wong, who takes first place in the people category with your entry of Dream Boats in Action. Congratulations. That's the band, right? Here you are. Oh, sorry. And now I hand the mic to Councilmember Liu.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. Next up, it is Rolando Colazo. His entry, My Best Friend and the Sunset, was selected for first place in the pets category. Congratulations. All right. Congratulations. Our next photographer, Raymond Wong, won first place in the places category with Heart of the Hillside. Raymond also received an honorable mention in the pets category with his photo, Grace in Motion.
You did it again.
Congratulations, okay?
Oh, wow. Look at that.
Good job.
Wow.
Wow.
Love it.
Congratulations. Our next first-place winner, Edison Rodriguez, plays in the nature's category with Be in the Sunshine. There it is. Wow, that's beautiful. And our final first-place winner goes to Jerome Ricardes. Who takes first? Who takes the Keep It Local category with his photo, In and Out Burger? Look at that. Unfortunately, Jerome was not able to join us tonight, and the remaining awards in adult division are honorable mentions. First up is Hector Camona with his Cuteness Overload. There it is. Photo in the people's category. Yes, congratulations.
I give it to the kid.
There you go, sir.
Love your hat.
All right, and now we have Councilmember Lo to the honors.
All right, the next honorable mention goes to Vicky Chan in the pets category with her photo, Poffic Picnic.
Oh, look at that.
That is so cute. Congratulations.
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 Up next for an honorable mention is Doris Law. With her entry, Honored the Late Former President Jimmy Carter in the places category. Congratulations. So nice. Thank you. So our next winner is part of this photography family that we have with us today. We have Leonardo Singson, also in the places category with his photo, A Different View of Progress. Oh, nice. Congratulations. You know, this is a really neat photo because you see it now, but once it gets all buried in our 57 freeway, you will never see it again. So this is really, really remarkable that you've got that photo for us. Our next photographer is Gabrielle Schubert. However, she's unable to be here, but her photo called Backyard Sunset over Diamond Bar is a winner in the nature category. Congratulations, Gabrielle. Next up, we have Irene Tu with her photo, Here Comes the Sun. And that's in the nature category. And unfortunately, Irene couldn't... Oh, she is here. Good job. I have to give you the photo. It's your certificate. This way. Irene, go this way. Also in the nature category, we have Kelvin Chan with his photo, Morning Fog. And Kelvin is not unable to be here tonight, but congratulations to him for that awesome photo. Oh, I have more. There's more. Our next honorable mention is Lynn, Lynn Liu, in the nature category with her photo, Infatuation. Wow, that's amazing.
We've seen it for three times, four times.
Congratulations.
But wait, there's more.
And our last honorable mention goes to Ryan Hazama. For his photo, Shine Bright Like Diamond Bar, also in the nature category. Congratulations. Good job.
Now, it's time to review this year's grand prize winner. Determining the overall winner of the photo contest is never an easy task. We had incredible entries this year, and the decision for the grand prize was especially close with strong contenders from both the youth and adult divisions. Without further delay, the grand prize winner of the 2025 Through My Lens Photo Contest is... Rolando Colazo for his entry, My Best Friend and the Sunset, in the adult pets category. No, he's here already? Yeah, you're already here? No mistake, no mistake. Thank you so much. This concludes our photo contest award presentation. Congratulations to all of our winners, and thank you to everyone who participates. Let's have a photo together.
Good luck with that squeeze.
Members, shall we stay here? Next, we will have the certificates of recognition for the classics and manager, John Urco, and Diamond Bar and manager, Kerry Farabee. The softball team here. Yeah.
Oh, you don't have to leave.
For sure, everybody get grab one. Okay, you are no speech. We are very thankful for your continued work with the softball team, adult softball team, for the seniors, 50 years above. Yeah, they enjoy participating in softball. Thank you very much. Would you want to say something?
Just so that everybody knows, what the senior softball league here in Southern California, we belong to the inner-city senior softball league, local ser. And we play on Thursdays. We have three teams from Diamond Bar, the classics, the diamonds, and another team, the rascals. It's a competitive game. It's supposed to be recreational, but it does get competitive. We play teams from Whittier, Duarte, Arcadia. In the past, we played Commerce and East LA. But right now, it's in between the seasons, and we're getting ready to start again in March of 2026. And one last thing, I'd like to just give a shout out to the city staff that makes it all possible for us. Andy Williams, Jessica Rialla, and Daniel Garcia have been instrumental in keeping the fields in shape and letting us have a decent game out there. So thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to express our appreciation for the support from the city of Diamond Bar and glad that we can represent the vitality of the senior community here in Diamond Bar.
Thank you. Now, we have a certificate of recognition for you guys. Thank you.
Congratulations. I saw you guys play one morning.
Come on, they're dressed for it. A lot of swearing goes on Thursday.
He's a great guy.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank your support. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for everything, guys.
Thank you so much.
Go Dodgers.
Keep coming. Roll out some balance, keep coming.
We'll have one more, yeah?
The Hindu thing.
This is a certificate of proclamation.
Proclamation. Next, we're going to have a proclamation recognizing October as Hindu Heritage Month. Is this our first time? This is our first time, no? No, not our first time. This is my first time. Thank you. I would like to invite the members of the Sunshine Senior Association to accept the proclamation recognizing October as Hindu Heritage Month. Sunshine.
How about Sunshine Senior and Friends?
Councilmember Lo, suggester Sunshine Senior members and friends. Friends, please come up here. Well, no. Come over here.
Can I please call the... Thank you so much for recognizing us. Can I, can I please call the five members first, and then, then we will have pictures with everybody. Please, Surindar Bhetaji, Pritvirajji, Rajesh Dang, Chaturbhai, and Brij Sharmaji. Please come, and then everybody else will come later.
Thank you, thank you. We have a proclamation here, but more people here? You miss Steve. Hey, Vina, you miss Steve. Vina. Steve.
Nice to see you.
Hi, nice to see you. Hi. What is this?
It's a Indian sweets.
Well, share with everybody.
2005, yeah.
Thanks for coming here. Thank you for coming here.
Thank you for working so hard.
Some people...
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you!
Yeah, sure. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
You, you are not?
Yeah. One, one more.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much for recognizing.
So welcome, everybody on the stage. I... Everybody's here. Happy Diwali, everybody. And I understand today is the holiest day of Diwali. Diwali started on Saturday, right? And I was very honored to be invited to the glorious Hindu temple on Saturday to join the festival there. What I was most impressed, I saw a bunch of, a group of young people, kids, behind the stands, behind, on the booths, that they are introducing their culture, their heritage to the visitors here, very enthusiastically. So I think for Hindu community, you have done very well to preserve your treasure, your culture, your tradition, and you have been very successful in passing the torch to your next generation. That's very inspiring. So thank you so much, and we will celebrate the Hindu Heritage Month together. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I think so I should face this way, there's more people here. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city members. We are really honored, and we are, we are thankful, and this is a beautiful city. We love it. And then, we can do anything from our side to the city. Please let us know. At the same time, we are loving this place. All of us are living here for ages. Like, I am here since last, probably 25-plus years, and now...
A year, a year before the city started as a corporation. So thank you very much, the mayor and the city council members, and all the present here. We really, really appreciate the city for giving us the proclamation, and we are always here to honor you. Okay? Anytime.
My name is Pritviraj Singh, and I'm a resident of Diamond Bar for 40 years. And we have a association, and I represent it. It's called Federation of Hindu Associations. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank the city of Diamond Bar, who have given us the pine room in the senior center to conduct every month a worship gathering and congregation. So I am very thankful, and for today's function of, you know, this heritage of Hinduism, you know, the oldest religion, if you Google, you know, they say it is more than 10,000 years old. So this religion is still surviving with almost more than 1 billion people on the earth. So we are very proud, and I would like to end up by giving you two quotations, very brief quotations, from Hinduism, that is from the scriptures. Number one, let noble thoughts come to us from any direction. This is the fundamental of Hinduism. Second is, God is one, wise men call by different names. So this is the beauty of Hinduism, and I am very thankful. And also, I think, you know, they would like to remind me, could say that yesterday we had White House Diwali function, and then we have the governor of California recognizing this as a state holiday, and the Hindu students or the employees can take special leave, you know, on these days. So we are very, very thankful to all the, you know, gestures being done by the community and by the city of Diamond Bar. Thank you very much.
Quick note, this morning also in L.A. Downtown City Hall, I was there. So ex-mayor Garzati was there, and everybody was there. We celebrated Diwali there, and thank you, you let us do it here. Thank you so much.
Forgot to mention that we also had our new council general. Yes. And the new...
Consulate.
For us, we have our own embassy here, so that is for the English.
Thank you, thank you.
Wait, some more.
Our doctor is also a councilwoman from Terida.
Artis.
That's the official one now.
Yeah, that's important.
Thank you.
Hey, one more, one more.
Thank you.
One more. One more. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I didn't do so well. Good.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
It's too, too, too bad the, the celebration ended today, otherwise I'm gonna encourage people.
You know, they have the lights, but they're going to...
Continue.
After 8 o'clock, it's going to be...
Aura, aura.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I wasn't smiling. Can we do that again?
Our next session is city manager report and recommendation. Is there a report, Mr. Fox?
There are no additional reports this evening.
Thank you. Next is public comments. Public comments is a time reserved for each regular meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the council on concerned calendar items or other matters of interest not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Although the city council values your comments, pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the city council or staff may briefly respond to public comments if necessary, but no extended discussion and no action on such matters may take place. There's a five-minute maximum time limit when addressing the city council. At this time, I will call up speakers who have submitted a speaker card first, then city clerk Santana will ask for those callers joining the teleconference who may wish to speak on the public comments. And I have received a speaker card from Regional Chamber of San Gabriel Valley. Aziz?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and city staff, and to our members of the Indian diaspora, happy Diwali. This was perhaps the spiciest moment of the year in the city council. So you all spiced our life. On the occasion of Diwali, the Festival of Lights, the Regional Chamber of Commerce in Guelle Valley proudly recognizes the remarkable contributions of small businesses in Diamond Bar, particularly those owned and operated by members of the Indian diaspora. These entrepreneurs have illuminated a city's economy through years of challenge, from COVID-19 pandemic to ongoing economic transitions by demonstrating adaptability, service, and steadfast dedication to their community. Congratulations. Diamond Bar's food and retail landscape has been deeply enriched by Indian-owned restaurants, specialty grocery stores that serve as cultural anchors and economic drivers. Among them are Diamond Palace Cuisine of India, Delhi Wala, Peacock Garden Restaurant, known to be the first Indian restaurant to serve bread baked in charcoal potatoes, charcoal clay pot. The new Bhikana Wala serves as a longstanding favorite for authentic flavors and hospitality, international India bazaar, and new sweets and spices, both offering traditional ingredients and ready-made delicacies, and which adds to the growing cluster of Indian markets serving our diverse population. And lastly, the Sungam Indian Grocery and Pan. City council member, have you ever had pan? I think we should invite them for a pan party soon. During this year's Diamond Bar Restaurant Week, members of the Regional Chamber of Commerce, both members, enjoyed an excellent dining experience at the Diamond Palace Cuisine of India, sampling a variety of signature dishes, notably the marinated lamb chops. Next time, skip the chicken masala, jump to the lamb chops. The experience was a fitting reminder of how small businesses continue to sustain the region's vibrancy and cultural connection. Mayor Andrew Chow, former Mayor Andrew Chow, the chamber, thank you for holding your monthly CEO events in different restaurants throughout the community. Thank you for elevating them. As we light, thank you. As we light Diaz and celebrate the renewal of this Diwali, we extend our gratitude to every small business owner whose perseverance keeps our neighborhoods thriving. Your service, creativity, and commitment shine as brightly as the lights of the season. Sub Diwali. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker card come from Raj Peruhid.
Good evening, everyone. Vasudev Kutumbukam. As the famous Sanskrit slogan says, "The whole world is one family." The entire universe, all the living people are one family. That's what the Sanskrit slogan says, and that's what our Upanishad says, which is the holy Grund or the Book of Hindu religions. With that, I want to first say thank you to the honorable mayors and the council city members of Diamondbar City. It's a proud moment for all of us that Diamondbar City is recognizing and proclaiming this one as Hindu Heritage Month. I believe personally that wherever the culture is nurtured and valued and given the privilege, the communities thrive, and that's what truly the message today being given by Diamondbar City. I want to add on this by saying, today Diamondbar started not just as a city of symbol, but it's setting an example for other cities that wherever the communities are given true value and the cultures are respected, the communities will thrive and work as single family. With that, I want to just say thank you. Thank you. Happy Diwali.
Thank you. Next speaker card came from Sinthe R.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Portem, council members, city staff, and members of audience. My name is Sinthe R. from Diamondbar Library. Join us for a fun playdate in the sandbox tomorrow, October 22nd at 10:15 a.m. Dig for treasures, explore set toys, and enjoy this special sensory experience while bonding with other families. This program is for ages two to five with parent or caregiver. Greeds have been used throughout history to organize information and design the world around us. Join OA County Libraries Make More on Thursday, October 23rd at 4 p.m. as we explore some magical crafts that use grease to have fun and help us with our lives. This point is for ages five to 12 years with parent or caregiver. Consider the Native American Heritage Month in a fun, fully engaging music and movement experience on Saturday, November 1st at 2 p.m. Participants will learn about the history and use of instruments such as the wooden flute of the Yamenchi tribe, the stone, stone clapper sticks, and ringing bells of the Tongva, and many more. This program is generously sponsored by the Diamondbar Friends of the Library. Please visit our website, OACountyLibrary.org for more information about our services and programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dorsey Rouse.
Hello, everyone. I want to say good evening to the mayor and council members. Some of you know me as Dorsey Rouse. I'm a 39-year resident of our lovely town of Diamondbar and always have been proud of our town. I am a member of the Lions Club here, and I'm a retired staff member of Pomona Unified School District. So here it goes. I've always felt immense civic pride in our city and believe that those tasked with positions of leadership had our residents' best interests in mind. What I have been witnessing firsthand over the past several months has begun to call into question my beliefs on the altruism of this duly-elected council. Through a chance, I met Mr. Amadee Gresby at the Diamondbar Albertson's Bakery. We had a fun time, time just shooting the breeze about the Kansas City Chiefs. Within a short time, he entrusted me to, he trusted me to introduce me to his wonderful family, his wife, Marcella, and sons Oliver and Seth. Mr. Gresby confided in me with the terrible time he was having with his landlord and his property manager. He invited me over to see firsthand the problems with his rental unit. I was able to observe black mold, plumbing leaks, sparking outlets, and most recently holes that were cut into the acoustic popcorn ceiling that ended up testing positive and sent asbestos in the air everywhere. I have been present. I have been a participant in multiple interactions with the property manager, the Gresby family, and various city and county agencies. They have tried to get help and instead have been given the runaround by a system that favors those with money and power over the disadvantaged and the disenfranchised. Mr. Gresby's son, Oliver, previously made multiple public comments, counseling meetings, at counseling meetings, and asking for help for his parents. And the family has submitted many written public comments to be entered into the record. They have been met with nothing but silence from the city. My question for all of you up there tonight is why has no one from the city reached out to offer help for this family? They are suffering. It's very evident they are suffering. Mr. Gresby is 82 years old, disabled, and unable to advocate for himself. His wife is 72 and blind, and at the mercy of others to meet her basic needs. They have had to live in their Diamondbar units for five months with open ceilings, active water leaks, disturbed asbestos in the air, and the loss of their property. And they've had to breathe in those microscopic particles because they have nowhere else to go. The landlord refused to provide alternate, alternative living arrangements, instead of choosing to ignore the problem and hoping the Gresbys will just pack up and go away. I want to know why there has been no action taken by the city council to address this gross miscarriage of justice and provide some sort of relief for this family. Why has the city staff not reached out? Why has their district council member not met with them or gone out to tour the damage? Why hasn't an inspector from the Building and Safety Code Enforcement not been dispatched to inspect the property and order the owners to remediate the cancerous material? I am extremely concerned for their health and safety and of the safety of the community. I want to know why the owners and property manager have allowed to get away with doing nothing for several months. How can you sit there and not care about people who live in our city and have lived in our city for over 14 years? They've paid taxes, they've gone shopping, they've voted, they've given to charity, supported small businesses, and they love this city just as much as anyone else. I'm disappointed in everyone of you sitting up there tonight, and I respectfully, and I respectfully request that you listen to your constituents and help the Gresby family. I'm sorry, but thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is from the Gresby family.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Once again, I'm here to speak to you as a representative of the, of the Gresby family. We are now a 15-year residents of Diamondbar, hitting our anniversary of our move-in this month. I am back to follow up with you regarding my last two appearances here at the council, as well as my father's emailed public comments, asking for your assistance with our negligent landlords and property manager. Due to the extreme callousness of Mark Zane Frelick, Sharon Beth Frelick, co-trustees of the Frelick Family Trust, owners of 1344 South Diamondbar Boulevard, Unit B, Diamondbar, California 91765, and their son, Adam Brett Frelick, Realtor, Broker, and Property Manager with Interbranch Inc., doing business in the city of Diamondbar as Clover Realty. The condo unit which has been, which we have been calling home for approximately 5,478 days, has become overrun with investigations of cockroaches, black mold, continuous plumbing leaks, disturbed asbestos, and contaminated personal property from airborne asbestos-containing material. Please to this council have gone unanswered. With my family, we have been only met with silence. From this body and from the city itself. Why has the city decided to remain silent when one of your own has come before you and repeatedly begged for help? We have nowhere else to turn, and we are desperate to get this contamination contained before it spreads to the wider community. We have gone to the South Coast AQMD and have spoken at the Board of Governors Meeting, and unfortunately, there is no jurisdiction for enforcement. They have reached out to Adam Brett Frelick to get the asbestos survey and the P5 cleanup started, but he has been making up excuses and stall, stalling tactics, trying to force us to move out before he's willing to do anything. That means we will be forced to abandon our personal property inside the unit or transport asbestos-contaminated materials to another location within the city. Ergo, exposing neighbors and community members to contamination, we do not believe that is the right thing to do, and we have been trying to stand up for our rights and for our neighbors' rights. But Adam Brett Frelick and his parents do not live in the city of Diamondbar. They do not have invested interest in the health and safety of the people who live and work here. We do. We are community members, the same as all of you sitting up there. So please, do not ignore this call for help. We need an inspection of the unit by the Building and Safety and/or Code Enforcement to begin the process of citing and enforcement for the negligent and intentional disruption of the acoustic popcorn ceiling without a prior asbestos test. Adam Brett Frelick hired a fraudulent certified asbestos consultant, a CAC company, and the submission of an invalid asbestos survey has contributed to a prolonged delay of five months, all the while we have had continuous exposure to toxic and harmful carcinogens, which is endangering our parents' lives and jeopardizing our futures. Adam Brett Frelick repeated, refused, his repeated refusal to comply with, comply needs to stop. If the SCAQMD does not have jurisdictional authority to force action, then the city of Diamondbar has an ethical and moral obligation to step in and take over command. You have previously been put on notice that the SCAQMD was willing to work with the city on a joint action in this matter. So please step up and be the force for good. Staff at the Building and Safety and Code Enforcement are familiar with the property and Adam because they, we've had multiple issues of habitability in the past. The most recent serious issue earlier this year was when the seat had to get involved and red-tag the patio fencing because of a failure, which posed great harm and danger to not just us, but the community as a whole. This box here is evident.
Thank you. Uh, this issue has been brought in front of the council for several times. City Manager Fox, do you have anything to comment?
Our building staff is certainly aware of this issue and has done everything that we can. I believe there are some additional information that we're aware of. Be happy to ask the building official to reach out to them again and see if anything has changed, but we thought the issue was, was closed and, and resolved. We've done everything that we can related to the plumbing leaks as far as the drywall repair and so forth.
Thank you. The next speaker card came from Bruce Chitias.
Honored council, late-suffering staff. I believe that those of us who possess the lived experience of singing "God Save the Queen" every morning in our younger years, our duty bound to address this question of monarchy come to America and to give some credit where credit is due. I invite the city of Diamondbar to join me in celebration of this past Saturday's world-historic "No Kings" reaffirmation of our enduring, established constitutional order. The success of those hundreds of thousands of foot soldiers, thousands of organizers and paymasters, that handful of financiers and millions of dollars expended in the cause of liberty cannot be denied. We still have a president, and there are no kings on the horizon. So a proclamation of gratitude is warranted for their sacrifice, and I believe may encourage other cities to join us in that appreciation. I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chitias. Thank you.
Think of Starbucks, it's chai tea, huh? Yeah. Very good.
That, thank you for correction. Now that's the speaker card I have with, with me here. City Clerk Santana, are there any public comments, emails, or anybody, any callers on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, no emails received, were received for public comment, and there are no callers on the line at this time.
Thank you. At this time, is anyone else want to address to the city council? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comments period. Next, it's the schedule of future event and consent calendar. City Manager Fox, can you please announce the schedule of upcoming events and proceed with the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor. On the scheduled events for the next few weeks, there will be free catalytic converter etching tomorrow morning from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at Calvary Chapel on Golden Springs. Coffee with the Cop will be held tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Paris Baguette in the Plaza at Diamond Creek at the corner of Golden Springs and Bray Canyon. Our annual Halloween party will be held this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to noon at Pantera Park. This is a free event with games and activities for the kids, including a costume contest for people and pets. Trick-or-treating will be available at dozens of booths throughout the event. The planning commission meeting scheduled for Tuesday, October 28th, has been canceled. There will be a meet our public safety providers event on Wednesday evening, October 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Diamondbar Center. Coffee with the Cop will also be held on Saturday morning from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the Diamondbar Golf Course. And our next city council meeting will be Tuesday, November 4th, starting at 6:30 p.m. here in the AQMD auditorium. On the consent calendar this evening, you have approval of the October 7th regular meeting minutes, approval of the check register dated October 1st through October 14th, and approval of the treasurer's statement for September. That concludes the consent calendar this evening.
Thank you for the report. Would anyone like to put any items for discussion? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
A move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
So we have a motion, we have a second. City Clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Liu?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Ting?
Yes, motion passes. Next is the public hearing. There are no public hearings items on to... There are no public hearings items on tonight's agenda. Moving on, council consideration. There are no council consideration item on tonight's agenda. Moving on, council subcommittee reports and meeting attendance reports, council members' comments. We're going to start on my right side from Councilmember Chow.
Thank you, mayor. I attended the San Gabriel Valley Council Government Governing Board Meeting last week and Senator Sasha Perez came and spoke on a package for bills that will pass and sign to law, specifically Senate Bill 293, Senate Bill 547, Senate Bill 610, Senate Bill 782. They were specifically put together to address the aftermath and recovery of the Altadena and Palisades fires. I want to thank her for her leadership on that and also want to congratulate mayor on a very successful state of the city. Thank you. That was a very well put together. Thank you staff for that and things very informative. There's a lot of work ahead of us, but we're ready to meet the moment and we'll do what we need to do. Two things, given that it's the conclusion of our annual wildly popular restaurant week, two things. So first, I want to congratulate Titas Coffee for their grand opening. If you haven't been, they're located on the north end of Diamond Bar, where American Tires and KFC is located. They just opened about a week ago. They had their soft opening on Friday. If you haven't gone, highly recommend it. Go check them out and maybe we can add them to the Coffee with the Cop rotation at some point. And I met with the owners today, Eric and Melissa. They're 25 and 23 years old and they're full of energy and hope and they pour their heart and soul into their location. So let's go and support them.
Are they going to have any ribbon cutting?
Yeah, we're going to coordinate with staff to help them with the ribbon cutting. And also want to just recognize Simon over there at Fusion to Anyone. He unfortunately closed his doors after eight and a half years in Diamond Bar. But it's, as the saying goes, we can close one door, another one opens. So his plan is to reopen at another location in Diamond Bar, to be announced. But that's coming, so I want to thank Simon. As all of you know, he's been very involved with the community. He's always supportive of our events and we wish him all the best and can't wait for his new location to open up. We'll make sure to go and support him as well. With that, I'll say goodnight and close my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I will ask Councilmember Ruth Lo to give the report.
Thank you, mayor. Congratulations to our population, our Indian population for their proclamation. We really celebrate with you and really thank you for your service and your involvement in our community. Everything that you do is looking out for the best and the best value, the best traditional value, the best encouragement and you really enhance our community. So thank you for your involvement and contributions. Happy to celebrate Diwali with you. Mayor, you did a great job with the state of the city staff. You did a great job as well. We all had a great time. We had a great showing and as Councilmember Chow says, we do have a lot of work ahead of us. These challenges forces us to work even further, even harder. So and we have to be one community to make that happen. I attended the subcommittee of the Fee Study Committee this week and again to say that we have a lot of work ahead of us. And it was a really great fun to have the restaurant week. I was so happy that I had to wait in line to get into a restaurant on Saturday night. So it was, just shows the vibrancy of our restaurants in town as well as the support of our community. And finally, today, the Rotary, the Walnut Valley Rotary hosted a barbecue for our law enforcement team, our sheriffs, our fire department sheriff, our captain's here, our chief is here, I think, and right. As well as our EMTs were invited. I hope that you guys had a great time. It was just a nice way for Rotary as a service organization to show our appreciation and support for our law enforcement. And also a great thank you to the restaurants that also supported the effort. El Pollo Loco, Bezo and Company, Mandarin Taste and Jollibee, as well as Chick-fil-A. So we really thank you for their support and thank you for all that you do for us every day. With that, I'll say goodnight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember Liu.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you staff for a wonderful presentation and the meeting. And for all you do, congratulations, mayor, on a wonderful State of the City address and our staff putting together and your leadership as we face some challenges ahead. Thank you. And once again, happy Diwalis and thank you everyone for coming out and among other things, a celebration of triumph, of good over evil, light over darkness and knowledge over ignorance. Thank you for coming out and thank you for city for making a proclamation to celebrate our Diwalis. And also a congratulations to all the honorees. Today, we have some amazing photos and we'll be out in our next year's calendar and also our senior baseball teams and managers. And Halloween is coming up and I believe Halloween this year will fall on a Friday. There will be a lot of events going on the weekend before and including different our community events and events by the city. Please celebrate, save and fun and we will see you around town. And we want to thank staff on an amazing restaurant week. Restaurant week has been a lot of fun. Had the chance to go out there, breakfast, lunch and dinner. It's great to see neighbors out there and also people, folks from out of town coming in and really get a taste of Diamond Bar. Thank you so much and goodnight.
Thank you. Mayor Portem?
Thank you, mayor. Happy Diwali, everybody. If I'm not mistaken, Anne, you said today that on Halloween, kids could come and go to jail. Unamaze, on the 30th, very exciting. We should get some information out about that. I won't be showing up for that for a variety of reasons.
Some obvious reasons.
Mayor, again, the state of the city was very well received. Thanks for a great job and thanks again to staff and everything that they put together, the hours that they put together. It's definitely a team effort and I think it's appreciated by our residents. The Through My Lens, every year, I think, I don't think it can get any better than that. That was a really cute picture. But when you have kids that are about this big, they got, they had, they were winners and it was just, they're getting younger and younger and it was great to see. And I want to thank the Diamond Bar Community Foundation for all of their support in supporting the Through My Lens program. How long has it been now? Is it 10 years that we've, 18? 17? We'll get there sooner or later. It's one of those numbers. So it's just wonderful to see that continuing on. So with that, I'll say goodnight and God bless you.
Thank you. I want to thank all my colleagues for supporting the State of the City address and I want to thank city staff to the excellent preparation and it was very well attended. I thank all the community's members to come to join the event. And after the event, I received a few feedback. Most are very positive. They welcome our transparency. There's some feedback that was very criticizing our budget. I understand that because the budget is the big thing in our state of the city address and that's our challenge. I think all of us here will work very hard next year to figure out something to help our budget situation and that's our goal. Thank you very much. Thank you. Goodnight.
My son loves Halloween, like love, 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 love.